Which what a lot of people don't know is the origins of the whole project. It was really about a mobility initiative of we people driving through Peachtree Corners, but we can potentially make it easier to get around Peachtree Corners. And so that was kind of the initial ideas, you know, how do we do that?
You're listening to Peachtree Corners Life, a weekly online radio show sharing ideas, opinions and news about the city of Peachtree Corners. Now your host Rico Figliolini.
Hi, everyone. This is Rico Figliolini, host of Peachtree Corners Life. Glad that you're able to join us. We have a special guest today, but before we get to Alex, I'm going to just want to say thank you to our listeners for being out there. This is brought to you by Peachtree Corners Magazine and we are moving on to a full schedule where we should be posting every week, a new podcast of different interviews with different people of different parts of the city. But today we have the city council member with us. We have Alex Wright of District Three, who's been a city council member since 2012, actually. So let's, let's bring Alex on. Let's bring him right in here. Hey, Alex, how are you?
I'm good. Good afternoon.
Yeah, good to, good to have you here. So we're recording this on a, on a Wednesday afternoon. This is going to be simulcast live on Facebook and YouTube in a few days. So I'm glad that you're going to be with us and we're going to be talking over the next half hour about things going on in the city, things that are near and dear to your heart and being able to be able to talk about experiences you've had and some new things going on in the city. So I'm glad to have you with us. So the first thing, you know, I have to ask you because it's been a long time since I've had you on and we've gone through COVID. I know you work for a major corporation, a consumer corporation out there. You know, how has it been being able to transition now, being that people are coming back to work to a degree? There's some hybrid stuff going on. There's still some remote stuff going on, quite a bit of that actually. And if I listen to the recruiters, it sounds like no one wants to go back to work and no one wants to actually go back into the office to work. They all want to be remote.
Right.
So, so how are you finding it out there corporate and government wise working?
I think our company, like probably most companies are kind of feeling their way about where they want to end up. I think that they realize they're not going to be going back to what it was with everyone there, five days a week, no exceptions. But I also think that with some exceptions that being remote like all the time, and there's exceptions that maybe that's not the best model either because I think you do need the human contact on some level to, you know, especially for you bringing on new employees. You know, how do you integrate them into the culture of your company? How do you bond with them, which you can do it remotely. It's just, I don't think as effective. So I, I think we're no different than pretty much any organization, just trying to figure that out. There was an article recently in the Wall Street Journal about two of the big investment banks there. But we're going back, you know, just like we were before. And the article was talking about how some of their competitors are looking at that as an opportunity to steal some of their workers away.
Right.
And I do think that I recently hired someone a few months ago and probably like in their late twenties, early thirties, like one interview was about that age. And that was a consistent question I got was what is going to be your new, new normal? And I do think that that will become a, something people will look at when they're, you know, they've got the salary, they've got the location, all the different things. That'll be something that they'll compare with. And I think if you're a company that says, we're going to be old school, you will probably have to, to pay some type of premium to get people to do that because it is a, I mean, my office is over in the Braves stadium. When I used to have to commute over the top end every day, that was a, that was a quality of life issue and, and not having to do that, you get two hours of your day back that you can, maybe you're not working those full two hours, but you're definitely working some of that. So the company to a certain extent is, you know, getting more production and there's plenty of evidence that shows that that's, you know, the case. So I, so I think it'll be some kind of mix, you know, each company will figure out what works for them.
That's interesting. I was listening to that Wall Street Journal podcast, actually, of that article. And then we're talking about, I think it was Chase or Morgan Stanley where they said, no, we want people in because even though they learn all this stuff in college, they really are reeducated when they get into that environment of trade, investment and all that stuff, investment banking. I guess because they want to teach some trade secrets you really can't learn over Zoom. Cause you don't want people recording those things, maybe? I don't know. But it's kind of interesting how they frame it. Like you said, that you have to, some, some jobs need to be done, I guess, to a degree in person. But most jobs, I think people are finding out just as easy doing it remotely and actually better. You know, you save two hours of transit, you're probably more enthusiastic about your job than you would be if you traveled an hour to get there and then leaving late or something.
Yeah. Yeah. When you, when I did have to start going back a little bit in April, you know, I sit there off, because when I would go back, there was no one at the office. There was just a handful of people there. I thought to myself, you know, I spent this time getting ready in the morning, driving, you know? And then I was sitting there in my office by myself to a certain extent, I'm thinking, this really doesn't make any sense. It, it kind of brought home like the insanity of, you know, of doing that every day. But like I said, I do think that you need some, you know, some level of, of, I mean, just think about like, like in my job, you know, we go and visit different sites with people at factories or whatnot a few times a year. And one of the main reasons you're doing is it just to kind of establish that, you know, that human bond with people. So I do think you need that. But yeah, this, like this whole collaboration idea where you've had offices, okay, we're going to have this open concept, everyone's going to sit together, do whatever the offices. And then you find out that the studies say, well, actually people are less collaborative because they're sitting there at these long desks with earbuds in and because everyone's getting on each other's nerves. So, you know, I do think there's a balance there.
So, yeah, that makes sense and I agree with, and obviously coming during COVID, that was never, that's, it's not even a good idea anymore, right? Being called everyone out in the open like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and certain jobs like Judge, Judge Tracy Kason, on my last podcast talked about how as a judge, she wanted, they did do video, a lot of video, but she said, really? You want to be able to see that person and, and interact with them in an in-person fashion because otherwise the other way around, it's just too cold. And I'm sure the judgment day will be different by doing it that way. But, so working with government though, because you, you know, you have the private side and now you have, and you have the government side. How has that been being able to do city council meeting, work sessions? How has that worked out?
I would say in that case, so last night we had a work session and it was the first time we were back in the, I can't remember the name of the room, but it's, we're real close together. Prior to that, we had been either remote or in this big open space, you know, sitting 20 feet apart. And I would say, cause think about like with the council, there's seven people and especially at work sessions, it's kind of a free flowing conversation. And I did find when we were remote or even when it was spread out, it's much more, the conversation is just, does not go as well. When I, it's not like people were arguing, but it just didn't have that natural flow to it because either you couldn't see the person or, you know, maybe someone's screen wasn't working and, you know, sometimes it's just that, you know, just the facial expressions. So I would say when you've got a situation where you've got, think about even in a Zoom call, normally you've got somebody leading the meeting and everyone's just kind of listening. It's not a seven people talking, potentially talking at the same time. So I think that for that particular scenario, it helps to be in person and close together. And that was the kind of feedback we were hearing last night that, you know, the mayor made several comments about how happy he was that we were all back together in that more intimate environment. And I would agree with that.
That makes sense. I mean, I've been on Zoom calls where there's 12 or 10, 10 to 12 people and it's, it's impossible to really get a sense of a room, if you will, when you're all in different rooms and
Yes.
Can't even read what the room, if you will, of what's going on and how to interact with people. Yeah. It's, that's a tough thing to be able to do. I don't know how Congress has done that when they've done those Zoom meetings for like C-SPAN meetings and stuff. I just, yeah, that's a tough thing. So are you all glad that you're back? I guess, are you all, you know, I mean, everyone's either vaccinated or masked or whatever. I mean, actually I don't, I don't think the city buildings need to, I don't think you guys need to have masks.
No, I, I believe that the policy is if you have not been vaccinated, that you're encouraged to wear a mask, but it's not mandatory. And that's what I've seen, you know, like in my regular job, same kind of thing. Like if you, same rules, like if you haven't been vaccinated, you know, we encourage you to wear a mask, but otherwise, you know, kind of back to normal. And that's what I think everyone on the council has been vaccinated, maybe one person has and I can't remember, we don't really talk about it. But last night there was nobody, nobody on the council was wearing a mask. It was a few people in the audience, but pretty much kind of back to normal.
Cool. So let's jump into some of the other things going on in the city. I know, you know, obviously Curiosity Lab has been gaining some more momentum now. I think there's things going on there. So give us a little bit background of what, what's been happening the last few months.
So just to kind of give you a little context, because I was, you know, I was prepping for this, this call, you know, because we got kind of regular job and all kinds of things. And it was almost like, you know, when we created this thing a few years ago, and then the staff took the idea and breathed life into it and started doing a lot of really amazing things with it. It's like an analogy might be, you've got this kid who lives at your house and then the kid leaves and goes off to college and then goes into their career. You kind of know what's going on, but you don't know, you don't know all the particulars of all the details until they come home and visit you and say, hey, this is what I've been doing. That's almost like what's going on where, so I'm just going to tell you some of the things I do know, and I suspect there's a lot more out there that I'm just not tuned into. But a couple of big things, and I, you probably familiar with some of these, there's a conference coming up in October, V to X, which is a really big deal. It's going to be in three sites across the planet, Silicon Valley, I can't remember the exact city, Frankfurt, Germany, and then Peachtree Corners. And it's going to be, you know, headquartered out of Curiosity Lab, but obviously what the two major hotels will be involved. And we're going to be bringing in some autonomous vehicles actually before the conference because that's kind of what the whole thing is about is, you know, integrating, you know, vehicles, you know, other types of technology where you're able to, you know, move around autonomously. So obviously having those vehicles there will be a need, but I think it's a minimum, the minimum, I won't say goal, but they're expecting at a minimum 500 out of town guests, maybe up to a thousand. And that will be 19th to the 21st of October. So they, they just told us a few weeks ago about this, but it's a pretty big deal to get picked. If you think about, you know, who the other two locations are, you know, to be in the same, you know, sentence with those two, I don't know. I mean, I've been to Frankfurt, Germany. I don't know how big of a tech center it is in Europe, but it's obviously a, you know, major cities in Europe for no doubt, definitely from a financial standpoint. So that's a really big deal. That's the first time we've had a conference. Because if you think about Curiosity Lab, we launched it September 2019 and then four or five months later, bam, you know, the world stops. And so the momentum we had going, you know, we had the Ollie out there, had to pull that because who's going to write it, right?
Right. And that was after, I think the Smart City Expo also
Yes.
September, I think, or June of, of that year.
Yeah. So that's, that's the big thing on the horizon in three months. And I made a couple of notes here. And one of the things that I think is going to be interesting about this conference that, I mean, some of this is kind of inside baseball, but you know, normally you go to these things and you'll have an initial, you know, big meeting and then they'll have the breakout sessions and then the breakout session ends, everyone just kind of trickles away. So they're going to turn that model on its head where they're going to start out the day in these breakout, breakout sessions. And then they're going to end the day at the town green, like with a big kind of get together, which I think will be very conducive for, not lobbying, but you know, just networking. That's a great venue for that, you know, it'd be, because part of this is an economic development play, I mean, Curiosity Lab was. And so to, you know, take it to, you know, what I would argue is probably one of our two biggest achievements since we've become a city, you know, Curiosity Lab and then the town center, you know, taking that, all those people from out of town, hey, we're just going to drop you off here, you know, 500, 1,000 people. I thought that was a pretty good idea to, to switch, switch that up. So you've already got them there and they're just going to hopefully stay and spend some money.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's the whole idea of having conferences and conventions, right? Drawing economic, drawing money to, to the towns that are doing it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense.
And so, yeah, last night at the work session, so we were talking a little bit about this, but they're going to have two companies that are going to be coming in, and I think this is going to happen before the conference, three different autonomous vehicles, similar to Ollie, but two different companies that are going to be coming in and testing. And then I think even during the conference, there's going to be more than just three vehicles because, you know, what I had said all along was for, for, for people to be willing to get on one of these things and travel, it's got to be a viable option to get in your car, which means it's got to come by more often every 10 minutes. Otherwise people would say, well, what's the point? So I do think they're going to try to have, I've heard as many eight to 10 running on the track. You know, so think about, you get out of a breakout session, a Curiosity Lab, hey, let's go to Androby or let's go back to our hotel. I mean, everything's kind of right there or Kettle Rock, which is, you know, on the other end. So that was some, an announcement last night. And another interesting announcement, and this is the part I'm really excited about was, so we're in the process, where the staff's in the process of negotiating an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement with the state DOT, which would, would allow the autonomous vehicles to travel up to the town center from Curiosity Lab. Because the, the reason we're able to do, what we're able to do now is the city controls that road. So we didn't have to negotiate with anyone about, you know, rights to do that. But as soon as you
Technology Parkway Road.
Yes. Yes, technology. That's right. But you know, the minute you drive off of Technology Parkway, say onto Spalding or 141, you gotta get, get permission. So what they're talking about doing is using that very wide sidewalk along 141 as, you know, conduit to get down to the town center, which what a lot of people don't know is the origins of the whole project. When we were initially, this whole thing came up, it was really about a mobility initiative of, but this is before the virus, of course. We can't control people driving through Peachtree Corners, but we can potentially make it easier to get around Peachtree Corners. And so that was kind of the initial ideas, you know, how do we, you know, do that? And I'm glad that they went the direction they did because one of the things I would have been worried about is this thing would have turned into like the shuttle down in Atlanta where no one rides it. And it's like, okay, you wasted your money. So this turned out to be a much, you know, the staff made a much better decision to, to go this route. But the, you know, the goal, one of the goals remains, you know, how do we make it easier to get around Peachtree Corners? How do we, you know, take people out of their cars if they want to, of course, and give them this other option to, to get around?
So they, so you're saying the DOT, so Peachtree Parkway, I think most people know is a state highway, state parkway. So it's, the state handles all that, the DOT. So you're, the city's looking to get permission, not to drive on Peachtree Parkway, but to, to have a mobile vehi, mobility vehicle riding along that wide asphalt path. That's like almost a wide sidewalk that goes along 141.
That's correct. So that still falls within the state's right of way. So they ultimately control that as well. But I think the, I'm just speculating here, but if I'm the DOT and thinking, okay, this is a good way to kind of test this concept out without getting it out actually on the road where
Right.
Something bad could happen.
So does that, now I'm trying to figure out, trying to remember that, if that goes straight, I know that goes past Wesleyan and continues on past where Lidl is, the shopping center over there.
You're talking about the really wide sidewalk?
Yeah.
I mean, it, it goes up, you know, because they just, they just finished connecting it, you know, after they built the bridge. There was, initially there was no sidewalk there. Well, then now finished that out and then it's just as wide. So you could, I mean, you, if this became more permanent, obviously you would need to do something other than just have the sidewalk. I don't know what that looks like, but just the fact that the DOT is willing to talk to us now, like it's, that's a really big deal.
Wow. Okay. That would be, I mean, that would certainly extend the use of vehicles like that outside that, that area, that 1.4 mile track.
Yeah. Because ultimately, if you're just, you know, you're kind of just going about your day-to-day, you know, life, people say, well, you spent all this money on Curiosity Lab, what's it doing for me? Or, you know, I don't see anything going on. I mean, the reality is there's a lot of testing going on that none of us see, but I think it is important that we have vehicles out there. Because ultimately what people are interested in was, well, how am I benefiting from this? My, you know, my day-to-day existence. That's just human nature. So when you, when you can put something out there where people are like, well, I might actually be able to use this and improve my day somehow, they, they get more supportive of it.
Yeah, I can see us getting to the point where we have 5G throughout the city and having that throughout the city, because we're small enough that I think the city can do it as an infrastructure plan, right? To be able to build 5G technology. So then that's what autonomous vehicles need, right? The 5G to be able to speak to everything. To be able to do that means that these vehicles don't have to be then, they could just be right on the road with the rest of us eventually. Maybe that's 10 years from now, but I can see that happening. Yeah. That's cool. Can't wait for that.
Like I said, that was news that we just got last night. And like I said, I'm particularly excited because that is part of the, so the origin story of the whole project. So to see that that's still, we're still pursuing that, because I think ultimately the public, we're probably more interested in that than all the kind of cool research that's going on. They're like, well, that's not, that's not doing anything for me there. At least it's tangible.
Right. No, I, I, and I get that, although, you know, part of that builds on, everything builds on itself. So, but I do get that. And I do, you know, as, as someone that lives here in the city and is active in the city also, I can't wait for that part to be a daily part of people's lives, you know, where, you know, maybe there is a, where we have our own transportation system within the city that people can just loop through to get to different areas of the city, to get to different retail parts, hotel to retail to restaurant would be cool, right? Yeah. So now, so if we're talking about town center and getting there, there's all sorts of things going on. Let's, let's touch upon that a little bit about town center. You know, there's quite a few things coming there. Peachtree Corners Festival is going to be there this summer for the first time. Do you want to share? Is there, you know, I know you've been active in the fitness trail, I think that we call it, right? Getting that built out. And I, and I was there just the other day and I noticed a few, a few, I think one new, I don't know, there's a couple of new things. I hadn't been there in a while. So then I saw that it expanded a little bit. It looked like, so maybe you want to tell us a little bit about, about that.
Yeah. So I think the official name they came up with is Path to Fitness, which that was kind of neat, you know, playing words. But for the people who are, I'm always kind of interested when people email me or I'll bump into them, like, I didn't even know it was there, you know, there at the town green, because it's kind of in the woods and you don't necessarily notice it. But, you know, for, yeah, for the listeners who aren't that familiar, coming to the town green, you know, there's a series of woods there. There's actually a path through the woods that they had cut for the first few concerts, you know, for people to get from another parking lot. And then we, you know, put some obstacles on there. It's kind of like an obstacle course, really. So there's 10, 10 different obstacles on there. There's a monkey bars, wall climb, rope climb, all kind of stuff. And one of the things that I found interesting is a lot of times when I'm over there, you know, just kind of out for a walk, that when I say young people, I'm not talking to just teenagers, but you'll have like kids, eight, 10, I was like, they want to go play where the big people are. Like it's kind of got a cool factor to it, if you will. So to your question about what's coming next, so a couple of things. One, you know, there is a playground on the green, playground, but there's a couple of things you can do. They've got the hill with a slide and they've got that, a couple of climbing devices. And what we've seen is that those are often just over swarming with kids, which is great. That's what we want, but we, we, they need some more things to do. And so we're actually going to build another playground, kind of category to that. And so if you're facing the Center Bistro where the stage is, you look to the left, we're going to take some of that area in the woods and put some new things in there that is still TBD. I'm actually, the city manager and I are actually meeting Friday morning with a, I guess a consultant, for lack of a better word, to help. I mean, we have an idea of what we want, but this person kind of helped, you know, vision it. But what we're hoping is that will start after the concerts in this fall and that maybe we'll have it done by year end. So that will be an additional playground area. In, in addition to that, on the, actually on the path to fitness, we're going to be adding four new obstacles that hopefully will be in by September. So that's going to be
So the fit, so the other part, the kids part though, I understood that maybe it's slightly older kids, like middle school age. So it won't be like small scale stuff. It'll be a little bit more challenging for like middle schoolers.
Yeah. So you're not going to have like a two or a three-year-old on it, but you know, I sit there, I was just telling you about kind of the fitness trail, which is really designed for adults and how like little kids are going to get on it. So I suspect that you'll have kids from, you know, six up, you know, but we want it to be kind of challenging enough where, you know, maybe some of the kids that are running on the fitness trail will also use that. Cause it, it really almost gets too crowded sometimes with so many people, which is a good, you know, that's a good problem to have. So that's why we wanted to put even more amenities in there, you know, because you always got, I mean, I have four kids. I don't know how many times my wife tells, you know, get off the computer, you know, go do something. So when you see those kids out there, I mean, that's a great thing. They're running around exercising. We want to encourage that and add more things. So hopefully all that'll be done later this year.
Cool. And the four things that, because I interrupted you, sorry. The four things that you were saying to the Path to Fitness Trail, what are the four other items you're adding there?
So one of them will be, I think about like rings, you know, like you're up in the air, like grabbing rings, you're going from ring to ring. So there'll be one of those, two other kind of like climbing, imagine like a wall that's an inverse wall where you're, you're climbing like up like this. So a couple of different devices like that. So a lot of it is
Like almost rock climbing type of
Yeah, a little bit like that. But like I said, it is more of an obstacle course type stuff. And it's, I've been amazed like how much kids, like you'll see kids climbing this rope, you know, it's a 20 foot high rope. And I never could climb a rope when I was, you know, eight or 10. So it's been, some people have some skills out there for sure. That's surprising.
That's true. Almost scary to see them do that. Cool. So there's a lot of, that's great that the city's looking to do that, to utilize that space. When I was out there just the other day, I think it was a few days ago, actually, I was walking out there early morning and I'm seeing more of the town, the townhouses being built that surrounds there. I'm almost feeling like everything looks a little smaller. Almost felt like the Veterans Memorial looked a little smaller than I remembered it from a year ago, let's say. And I guess part of that is because you got the townhouses closer in now.
Yeah. No, I know what you're talking about. Once the, once they got right up on top of it, it, it's the same kind of vibe. But you know, one of the things like from the beginning, what we wanted to create was kind of a intimate feeling, if you will. Like we went up to Swanee to, to talk to them, to, you know, kind of lessons learned. And they've got a beautiful facility up there. But one of the things that's a kind of a downside for them is they've got two major roads that border their, their town green. And it's pretty extensive. I think there's like seven acres, the green itself is.
It's fairly, it's fairly big. It's bigger than ours. Yeah.
And ours is about two acres. And what we wanted, one of the things we wanted to do is be able to, you know, parents can come, they got their little kids and not, not that a two or three-year-old can't still run off, but you know, if you're able to sit there, say one of those green rocky chairs and your kid's just out there in the green running around, it's a lot easier to keep an eye on them, not worry about them getting run over because there's, you know, it's a lot easier to keep an eye on them, not worry about them getting run over because there's, you know, there's literally, you got to really work to get near a car from there.
That's for sure. Yeah. No, they would really have to get right off and a parent would not be paying attention at all for them to get lost out.
Yeah. And speaking of the town homes, one of the things that when we went to Swanee, it was kind of, they had an interesting concept. They called it, uh, the beach concept. And what, what they meant by that was they said, build the beach first. And what they meant was build the town green first. That's the beach. And then the people who want to live at the beach, you know, certain people like live at the beach, some people don't. They will then kind of know what they're getting in for. Like, okay, we're going to buy one of these townhomes. It's on the green. Uh, there's going to be noise and we want that. Or at least that's what I'm hoping because, you know, if you spend $700,000 and you're right there on the drinking, I'm, I'm hoping that those, whoever those people are, don't, don't say, hey, there's a lot of noise.
You know, I, I asked someone about that that was looking to downsize. And I said, and they were about the same price range, I guess. They were downsizing too, if you will. From a big house to like a townhouse. And so why, why don't you look at one of those that's on the green? Because if you're out on your porch, you can be sipping on a bourbon and watching the concert playing across the way.
That's right.
And they were like, yeah, there'd be too much noise. Now, of course they're looking to retire. They were like, um, heading into their sixties and the, and stuff. So everyone has a different feel about it, right? I, I wouldn't mind that because I mean, obviously the concert's over by ten, ten thirty, eleven usually. I mean, that's, it just depends on the individual, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, you know, they're, yeah, they're normally over by ten. There's ten of them a year. Yeah. It just depends on the person, you know? It's like, I wouldn't want to be necessarily right on the green. But if you think about living in one of those townhomes, you can walk to restaurants, you can walk to a grocery store. You can walk over the bridge to a dentist's office, to a doctor's office. I don't go to movies much, but if you wanted to go to a movie, I mean, literally just about anything you want, you could, could walk to. So it's, and you're seeing this across the country, you're seeing it across Gwinnett County where, you know, people want to live in these kind of denser downtowns, if you will, that walkability. So that's, that's really what we were trying to create.
It's interesting how people can be lazy in a way. Because, you know, the parking, let's say at the Forum, the parking in the middle, near the retail, everyone wants to go there. But parking away from it, that's the last place you want to park is then you got to walk, right? So, so like you're saying, I mean, if you live on the green, if you live in one of those townhouses, you can walk to anything within minutes. It'll be interesting to see when that, if Roberts, Charlie Roberts ends up putting up. I don't think a hotel will go up because at this point, I mean, that's one of those things that may not happen, right? But a hundred and sixty apartment complex, seven stories, we're overlooking town, town center. I don't know if most people know, be behind the Chase Bank, that, that open area that's been cleared out. But that can be interesting. A hundred and sixty families, you know, going on, on to the town green, getting to the movies, eating and stuff. Those are apartments, you know, I mean, could be interesting. A lot more density, like you said. So are you also, you know, with all this trail stuff? And I know, I know one of the things you were thinking about it was maybe, you know, with Peachtree Corners Festival coming in September to the town green and outside the roads actually, because I think part of the Peachtree Corners Circle Road is going to be taken up by the festival. If I understand correctly. So more events are going to be happening at town center and in this area, bigger events like this. And one of the things you were talking about, you know, at one point, one before we started this was possibly a competition, maybe something similar to a tecathlon or some sort of fitness competition that maybe could happen at town green. Maybe picking up, using that path of fitness. I mean, so there's all sorts of things that the city can still draw upon, right? Events and such.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, I kind of view, uh, this is just a term I came up with, but, you know, creating anchors. What I mean by that is things that people want to live near. Often you have natural anchors. People want to live near water, you know, whether it be river or lake. You know, so in the case of Peachtree Corners, I would be our anchors as the Chadute River. Or like I live right near Berkeley Lake, that's an anchor. Wesleyan, you know, my kids don't go there, but I, you know, there's people who move here to be close to that school. You know, it's an anchor. So anytime, and I would argue that Curiosity Lab is an anchor where we've had companies relocate just to be near it. And so the town center is a, is a, is a new anchor. I would argue that the green itself is more important than the town center. In that if you go to the town center on a Sunday or a Saturday afternoon, there's literally hundreds of people, they're just hanging out, loitering, relaxing. You go across the street to the Forum, there's no, you know, there's nowhere to do that. I mean, people want to have that. And it was interesting when we were initially going through this with a developer, they had no interest in a green space. Because, you know, they couldn't quantify, they couldn't monetize it. So they didn't, they didn't want to do it. And that's one of the reasons, you know, why the city ended up owning a bunch of it. Because that was the only way to make the numbers work where, you know, we weren't worried about making monies per se off of the green. Uh, and I think what maybe the developers are starting to see is people will pay, you know, people are paying $700,000 to live on that green. Because, you know, they want to be near the action. And, you know, hopefully what we'll see maybe across the street at the Forum is that they'll kind of pick up on that and say, we need something that will, you know, an activation area that people want to hang out. I mean, the Forum's a neat place. There's just nowhere to hang out except looking at a parking lot.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. I think I had this conversation with Brian Johnson at one point where I, where I'm, my feeling is, the way things are going. For example, there's about thirteen retail shops that are closed there right now. I counted that last weekend and I think Pooch and Paws actually is closed now. So that's up, that was up there too. So that may, that may make it fourteen now that, that are closed, retail locations in that, in that shopping center closed. I can see some part of that property, whether it's the office building that's on the northern side of that property, or maybe the southern side where, you know, a seven story apartment condo complex, maybe an equity owned, a property would make sense versus an apartment complex. I can see them maybe tunneling out a little bit of the center part where the cars are and make, making, making a green space. This way people can, like a pocket park almost within that. You might lose some parking spaces, but you know, we're really, I mean, like you said, there's nowhere to go if you just wanted to hang out and.
It's pretty rare that there's no parking there. You know, one of the things that we talked amongst ourselves at one point, you know, because we've talked about doing some type of art center. And, you know, the, the Center Bistro location has, it'd come up before, you know, actually during the, during the original plan, we tried to get a kind of like right of first refusal, you know, to buy the property if it, you know, went under or maybe just have them lease it or whatever. And that, that never went anywhere. Because even before COVID, you know, the movie industry was already struggling. So we were worried about what comes of that space if it doesn't work out. Anyway, that, you know, that, that hasn't, there's been some discussions there, but is, you know, the numbers just don't make any sense. But if you think about from an activation standpoint, look over at the Forum. What if, God forbid, you know, a Belk's closed or Barnes and Noble closed?
Right.
Well, maybe you go into one of those spaces where, you know, maybe it's a long-term lease or what. But, you know, you, you might be able to change that, you know, particular building into some type of, you know, performing art center. And then, then that becomes an anchor, that becomes an activation point. So I'm not saying I want that to happen, but, you know, there's different options down the road for things to, to happen.
Yeah. And I, and I don't disagree with you. I, you know, Belk's has closed some national stores. Nationally they've closed stores. They haven't closed this one, but that doesn't mean they won't. Barnes and Noble, uh, brick and mortar bookstore versus their online, their own online store or Amazon. I am still surprised, I forget how many square feet that is, but I'm still surprised that that is opened when other businesses with smaller footprints have closed their doors. So I wouldn't be surprised if, if that, God forbid, that happens there.
Yeah. Well, I think one of the things that hurts, helps Barnes and Noble is, like I said, it's got kind of a hangout vibe to it. You know, going there and drink coffee and that kind of thing. And people are, you know, they, they, people like to hang out with their friends and just, you know, talk and just think. There's nowhere else in the Forum that you can do that. I mean, if you go to a restaurant, you feel kind of bad taking a table up just for hours, right? You're, you're hurting the witnesses. There you can do that. No one's, you're not hurting anybody.
And, and there's no coffee place there ever since, I think it was Caribou, that was years ago, closed. There's really no coffee shop set aside and then even a Starbucks in there, you have to go up through, down the road to, to get to that.
That's right. That's right.
So there's still a lot of growth potential for different things, even when there's a negative, right? So maybe if Belk's goes out or maybe if Barnes and Noble, or if the developer decides that they want to adjust a few things and, and redevelop it a little differently, those are all good things now.
Yeah. I, I think the biggest challenge there is with the Forum is that it's owned by REIT. And, you know, you're, there's a management company that, you know, you can interact with, but, you know, they're just the, the face. So, because there's been, there's been various conversations within about some kind of creative ideas. And just to have not, yeah, they haven't gone anywhere. So it's, you know, it's like that Jerry Maguire movie where it's like, help me help you, right?
They're saying, they're saying no. Yeah. Because they're REIT and thirteen stores or fourteen stores closed is just a write-off to them. So they don't care. They don't live here locally. They don't, they don't really care. And hopefully, you know, and, and the, you know, the other side of that with apartments being very little occupancy. I'm surprised even Corner Center sold. I think that was sold for $45 million or $40 million that are comp, apartment complex. A lot of money, right? You were saying land is expensive. I mean, I just saw something listed that land under Lazy Dog, I believe, with the lease of Lazy Dog is selling, I think it's the offering is four and a half million dollars for that property. Because that's an app parcel, if I remember correctly. So four and a half million for that piece of land with Lazy Dogs on it and its extended lease. I guess someone thinks it's valuable enough to all put it out. It's expensive.
Yeah. I mean, we've had, uh, people approach, you know, the city about, you know, the, I guess five and a half acres of woods, you know, that border the town green. We've had people approach us about, you know, buying that and putting stuff there. And I think, I mean, nothing's forever, but I think the consensus is that, you know, even though that's money, that's, I mean, you could sell it and take the money and do something with it. And I think the view of the community is, you know, they like having the woods there. And I think it would kind of hurt the, the vibe, if you will, that, that, that we've got there with the, that intimate part I'm talking about. If you took the woods away and then put a bunch of new buildings.
Right.
So just going to say, you know, that, that there's not a lot of raw land around. And so that's, there's people definitely interested in that, but I'm pretty confident for the foreseeable future, it'll stay woods.
Cool. Well, that's good. I mean, I, if, if anything, I was thinking, you know, art center would be a great, that could be a great place for that. But, you know, I can't see more apartments there.
No, well, I mean, we think about, we bought that land specifically because we didn't want, not just the land with the town center, but the land with the woods is the same thing if we're going to go there. So it really makes sense to buy land to stop apartments and then put apartments.
Right. Yeah. No, I totally agree. I'm with you there.
I mean, there's definitely places for apartments, but I don't think that's the place for them.
Well, there's only, you know, how much density can you put pile into a place, you know? I mean, kids have to go to school. They have to be infrastructureed. I mean, there's all sorts of things that, you know, people have to live, other things that come with density, right? So.
That's right.
So we've been talking with Alex Wright, City Council Member, District Three. For those that don't quite know what District Three borders, can you tell us? So then people.
Yeah, I'm a very visual person, so I know everyone else isn't. But, you know, if it kind of, if you were looking at a map, it would just give you some kind of natural boundary. So, you know, if the city running north or running south to north, like post one is the south. Post two's in the middle and then post three is kind of the northern part. So boundaries would be Berkeley Lake, you know, City Berkeley Lake, that's kind of our northern boundary. Runs all the way along the river down to about a little bit past Jones Bridge Park, almost down to like where Simpson Wood Park is. If you know where Peachtree Corners, like the North Manor neighborhood, that's kind of the southern part of post three. And then all along West Jones Bridge, up to about where the YMCA is. And then you take a left on Peachtree Corner Circle. You go all the way up till it dead ends at Medlock and then a right on Medlock and then all the way out to Norcross. So that's, that's post three.
That's fairly big too. So.
Yeah, it's, it's probably about fifteen thousand people, you know, each post is about fifteen thousand. And, you know, for us, that's like, you know, who live around here, that doesn't seem like a lot of people. But one of the things that's interesting, when you go to these, you know, government, they have like a GMA convention every year in Savannah where you get to interact with people from across the state, you realize that, okay, you know, Peachtree Corners is kind of the outlier as far as, you know, cities across the state where, you know, you're talking to the, you're in a class and the guy next to you is a mayor from a town with two thousand people in, the whole city, right? And, uh, kind of makes you realize this, you know, it's pretty big. I'll say it's top ten, but maybe it's like in the top fifteen biggest cities in the state, maybe. So it's relatively big.
I think we have about forty-four thousand odd people, I think, in this city. And I think, I forgot, eighty percent of those that work in the city don't live in the city. I mean, there's all sorts of statistics like that, that people would be surprised probably of. Cool. So if people want to get in touch with you, website, I guess they go to the city website and they can find your email address there.
Yeah, they can. And I haven't been real good about this lately, but I do still send out a newsletter every so often. And, uh, but, you know, if you want to get on that distro, you know, you can email me at the city and I can add you. But we've probably got about, gosh, six or seven hundred people on that list. And then, you know, the people forward it on and it's just like a, you know, way for me to share news that's, you know, like the people work for the city. They don't have the luxury of kind of putting their own little opinion here and there, you know, it's just straight news. And sometimes people do like to hear, you know, kind of like our conversation here, like, you know, it's a little more colorful, I guess. Because you can, you know, get a little more behind the scenes, what's going on and people's opinions.
And I've gotten your newsletters and I'm happy to get them because I, I do like the opinions that you share in there. So it gives me a little bit more, rather than just state the facts, ma'am. It's, it's a little bit more editorializing, which is, which is good. So thank you, Alex. I appreciate you being on the show with us again. This is Alex Wright, City Council Member of Peachtree Corners. If you need to reach out to him, check the city's website. And if you have comments, put them in the comments below, if this is on Facebook or YouTube, and I'll try to get answers for you. Thank you again, Alex. Appreciate you being with us.
Yeah. Thanks for the invite. Have a good afternoon.
Thanks for listening to Peachtree Corners Life with Rigo Figliolini. You can listen to our live stream on Spreaker every Thursday night at eight thirty PM or on demand at iHeartRadio, Spotify and iTunes. Don't forget to like our Facebook page for notification of our live video streams of the show. Catch our other podcast shows at PeachtreeCornersLife.com.